Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting this evening, June 12th. Can we please rise for the pledge?
Mr. Richardson.
Yes. I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Commissioner Anderson, Commissioner Richardson.
Here.
Garnon.
Here.
Eaton.
Here. Thanks. After a review of the minutes from the previous meeting, is there any changes or revisions? I have one.
Okay.
Mr. Richardson is mentioned in here twice in your eyes.
Okay.
Was...
We will fix that.
I was there for the meeting, but is this what we voted on? Were we approving minutes from that previous meeting when we did the Bertelli's Drugstore remodel? Is that why you may have abstained?
It was. That was before.
That was before.
Two or three months, because I know I voted then on this last.
Bertelli's, two sessions passed.
So we'll get you on there as an A. She has five there, but she, you know, what she did is she just slipped her name in for...
No problem.
And we didn't catch it, so.
Unless there's any other changes, is there a motion by our commissioners?
I have a motion to approve the minutes.
A second? Motion by Mr. Eaton, second by Mr. Richardson, and a discussion. If not, all is a favor.
Aye.
Okay, thanks. Move on to item one of discussion tonight. The Sierra Business Council will be facilitating a public study session for the City of Sonora Energy Action Plan.
And that is exactly what we'll be doing tonight. That is the only item on our agenda. We're going to turn it over to them. They'll have a public presentation for you as well as the public, and then the public will be asked, as well as yourselves, to make any comments or ask any questions. Come on. You have to hit the button on the projector, too. The room's flashing. You have to hit the button to turn it on. There you go.
Pull this flashlight up.
We do have extra flyers up there if anybody needs one. Can you take out the material?
So we have about a 15-minute presentation for you guys this evening, and then we'll open up your comments and public feedback. Are you with PG&E, sir? So I'm Paul Arns with Sierra Business Council, and PG&E does administer the funds for our program. Don't believe we have a representative from PG&E here tonight.
Can I see that, okay?
No, it's fine.
All right.
If you want, you can hit on light if you need.
Hit the lights, okay? Too dark?
Yeah, one more. Here you go.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for having us here today. As I mentioned, Paul Arns with Sierra Business Council and run our planning program. I want to start just by giving a brief overview of what we will be covering today, and then I will hand it off, the presentation to Chris Selda, who is our planning technician, who is going to be the main lead on development of the Energy Action Plan. Go to the next slide. We'll all cover an overview of what an Energy Action Plan is, what the success for that plan could look like here in Sonora, so we'll have the timeline for development of the plan, survey results that we have had open as an online survey the last few weeks to date, and then we'll have a public feedback facilitated discussion with the council. So a little bit of background on our program. The Sierra Business Council is a nonprofit based in Truckee that has been working throughout the Sierra for over 20 years to promote what is considered the triple bottom line, which is improving both the environment and economy and social equity together. And one of our programs since 2010 has been providing planning assistance to local governments throughout the Sierra that is funded by PG&E. So it's the partnership between Sierra Business Council, PG&E, and the City of Sonora to develop an Energy Action Plan. PG&E provides the funding through the Public Good Surcharge, which is a small percentage of every resident and commercial business's bill, about 2% to 3% that funds all of the energy efficiency programs in the state of California. And a small portion of those funds now go to provide planning assistance to local governments. We are here today to collect input from the Planning Commission and the community at large. Now I'd like to hand off the presentation to Chris Selda.
Thank you, Paul. Can everyone hear you? Okay, great. So I will begin. What is an Energy Action Plan? Well, essentially with the plan, we're trying to answer the question, how can we help the community save money by looking at current energy usage, finding trends, and identifying opportunities to be more efficient, to save money? The way we do that is through an EAP, that's how we shorten Energy Action Plan, which is a roadmap that addresses different areas of energy use in the community. That's residential energy usage. It's also non-residential, which includes both municipal and commercial usage. With those types of energy use, we're looking also at existing buildings and also new construction. We also address renewable energy and how to expand that, and also the water energy nexus, is what we call it, energy use when water is used. This plan is voluntary. However, it is meant to inform policy and to be implemented. And Sierra Business Council, for the past nine jurisdictions that we've helped develop Energy Action Plans for, have been involved with the jurisdictions closely for the following year to help with that. Next slide. So, why an Energy Action Plan? Again, the goal here is to bring money back to the Sierras to benefit the community. Savings through the Energy Action Plan comes in the form of energy and money. Just as a note, the energy savings in Sonora since 2010 have equaled roughly 2 million kilowatt-hours annually from a collection of all the PG&E programs. With money savings, you can put that money back into the local economy. Funding also has expanded. Communities who have and are showing that they are planning and looking at the future and how they can be more resilient are considered higher over communities who don't have plans. And again, this also addresses the weather energy nexus. So we're looking here at the energy needed to maintain comfort in your homes and businesses. This plan does address that. And finally, or also we're looking at this plan being able to provide flexibility in meeting Sonora's energy needs through a variety of ways, not just through the grid. Lastly, something that I find particularly important, especially for small communities, is being a rural leader. In meeting state directives, Sonora has a true opportunity to be an example as a successful rural community leader who has maintained resilience and adapts to uncertainties without, you know, having to be a Bay Area city. I'll briefly touch on this. You may be aware that California does have some regulations, policies, and goals. These are significant at the state level in reducing energy usage. So the first is that the California's building standards, they are very among the most stringent in the nation as of...
They estimate that implementing the 2016 code, the most recent energy code, may reduce statewide annual electricity consumption by 281 gigawatt-hours per year. So there are significant savings in, again, just complying with the state standards. There's also renewable portfolio standards, which requires IOUs to purchase a certain percentage of their electricity from renewable sources. And California also has this goal to go towards zero net energy, which I can explain more later if you have any questions after the presentation. But essentially, it requires all new residential buildings and commercial buildings to be zero net energy by the year 2020 and 2030, respectively. Finally, AB and SB 32 requires the Air Resources Board to reduce emissions, and they work cohesively with energy service providers to ensure that that happens, so we're working with the people. Oh, actually, one more thing, just to show you a little bit about the graphic here. The national trend in energy usage has gone up significantly, but California's standards, again, because they are very stringent, has kept energy usage low. So we are doing our part, but actually, I have another fun trivia for you later. Next. So, I think it's been really cool for us to have worked with nine jurisdictions so far. We've seen successes and we've seen failures. I think that's only natural. But in our, in our eyes, what we've seen as a success is ideally dedicated staff, engaged community members, and an unlimited budget. But that is not realistic, so we've been lucky to work with engaged staff members, people who care, engaged community members, volunteers, people who see value in this work in bringing savings to the community. And we're here to connect the community, residents and businesses, with free resources and networks. Networks and free resources comes in the form of, let's see, for example, Beacon Program is a program that the Institute for Local Governments helps to connect local governments with other local governments in expanding and sharing best practices, and it's free. So we, we help different jurisdictions sign up for programs like that. Next slide. So a few examples of implementation after communities have accepted or approved the plan that we've done is, one example is Title 24 Training. We've partnered with Energy Code ACE to bring trainings locally. It wouldn't have normally happened in Nevada City, but we were able to bring it there. Normally, trainings are offered for free in San Francisco and Stockton. We realize and recognize that that's quite far and have had great success bringing the use to contractors' associations and other communities who can benefit from it. It's residential, commercial, and again, it's no cost. They provide lunch, materials, and a certificate at the end of a full day of training. Also, we have done an energy fair. Nikki Caravelli, our Civic Spark Fellow, she works for, it's an AmeriCorps program by the Local Government Commission. That was her big project this year for Alpine County, was creating an energy fair, which was a collaboration between us, county staff, Diamond Valley Elementary School. We invited solar, water, and energy vendors to host informational tables for adults and children, and it was extremely successful for our first project. There was high visibility in the community, tangible measures handed out and given to adults who were coming to pick up their children, and hands-on learning for the students. So that's just one example of a way that a community saw an opportunity for us to come in and expand just the program and the reach for these programs. So I don't know if Paul mentioned, but we do administer PG&E's Sierra Nevada Energy Watch Program, which we call SNU. We do have two representatives, John and Ruann, who work for the SNU department, and if any businesses have any questions for them, feel free to ask. We did this project down in Alpine County. It was a lighting upgrade, a lighting retrofit. The payback equaled less than a year, but energy savings were realized for much longer. And yes, I had already mentioned, but in Sonora, approximately 2 million kilowatt-hours have been saved since 2010. So the timeline for the Energy Action Plan development process, right now, we are in the community engagement portion. Survey was given out online and also, well, it is an online survey. We handed out flyers all of last week to let people know, and this in-person study session where we hope to get good feedback from you folks and also everyone in the room. We'll take that feedback and create a draft plan between July and September. It'll go back and forth between us and the Community Development Department. And hopefully, too, is our, if there are any community members who would like to help us vet more strategies or would like to take a final review of the plan, we invite that as well. But during this time, we'll also be collecting and verifying any energy usage data and quantifying potential savings from the strategies that will go in the plan, both monetary and energy. And then in October and November, we'll hold another public hearing before yourselves, the Planning Commission, asking for your recommendation to bring this to the City Council, and if the City Council can decide whether they want to accept or approve the document. If they do decide to go that way, then between January and December, we will be by your side to help implement the plan. December 2018, we will wrap up all of the work that we've done and hand it off, make sure to pinpoint any ongoing needs, and definitely recording your accomplishments. So the survey that we had, that we opened on May 25th, we received 25 results as of this morning. I did check, and I wanted to clarify for anyone in the room who hasn't taken the survey, is we are looking for residents and businesses within Sonora's city boundaries. So the way you can do that easily if you don't know is just Google "City of Sonora" on Google Maps, and you could see the boundary. Typically, I think, addresses with a five-digit is outside of city boundaries, but we'll vet the results either way. 48%, most of the respondents were between the age of 55 and 64. 52% say that they use utility rebates and have participated in energy efficiency programs. Out of those, 83% say they've seen cost savings and other benefits. And just as a side, too, residents, 60% of residents own their homes, 28% rent. Business owners, 24% own and 24% lease or rent their space. For us, that's important just because we want to know and be aware of what people feel they can achieve in terms of actual, you know, fixture replacements or what they have, you know, control over. What we found the most interesting, however, was that 88% said that they are familiar with energy efficiency practices. However, 71% have home electricity bills over $125, and the reported areas of homes that use the most usage were heating and cooling and kitchen and laundry. So for us, that's important because we want to be able to pinpoint programs that can target that, and they're actually, I mean, this just goes to show there is significant opportunities still to lower those bills. So for anyone who has not yet taken the survey but would like to, we have some hard copies that have been circulated, or you can take it online here at surveymonkey.com/r/sonoreeap. And now I'm going to go into the five roughly different sectors that the plan addresses. I'm going to have some questions that I'd like you to be thinking about in the background, and once we get to open comment, hopefully, that'll stir some ideas. Residential energy usage. So here, we're kind of, we're trying to find out how the plan can help reduce your energy used at home. I'd like you to be thinking about how aware are you of the energy that you use at home, and are there any barriers that are preventing you from participating? So a few strategies that we've used previously and think might work are participating in energy efficiency programs such as energy upgrade or low-weather, low-income weatherization programs. With home energy use transparency, this is something new. We have never put this in a plan before, but essentially, it could be something like residential energy conservation ordinance that requires people to be transparent about their energy use of their home, disclose any past energy use when they're selling it. That's just an example. We've never done that before, though. And then finally, outreach events. Like I said, any time that we can get out there in the community to events that are already happening is just another way to spread the word. Sonora's average monthly energy use, individual household monthly energy use, is less than the national average, which is great, but it is still higher, slightly higher than the California average, which again, goes back to the very high standards that California has set, but again, a leading example for the nation and other rural communities. For non-residential energy use, here again, now it's pretty much the same question as in your home, but now for your business. Are there any barriers for your business or place of work participating in energy efficiency programs? We recommend looking into or promoting active participation in utility offered efficiency programs, perhaps investing in smart technologies such as controls or occupancy sensors, and then also benchmarking and tracking. So if businesses have the ability to benchmark their energy use and then track how they're using it throughout the day, perhaps they can understand, you know, more of those opportunities to mitigate. For new construction, again, we'd like to address if there's any, if there is any construction happening, and this isn't just new, I think this also applies to major renovations. You know, what types of infrastructure are you expecting to see in Sonora in the next five, 10 years, if any, and which projects can benefit from perhaps, you know, going beyond Title 24 standards? Just a thought. We're thinking there could be help, if any assistance in the design phase could be used or just increasing compliance via Title 24 trainings that we can offer for free, or again, encouraging going beyond the standard. For renewable energy, we would like the plan to address the question, how can we expand it? Again, this kind of goes back to resilience and being able to be flexible with meeting your energy needs. I think a lot of people understand the value of the sun on their roof. We understand, too, that it comes at a cost. It's not easy to put up solar, so, you know, it does require some point on the, on the city to find and expand financing options, or even just putting that out there in a plan available for residents to have different options to finance solar. And then also getting feasibility assessments, just knowing whether or not it's possible on your home or business, I think is helpful. And we've been able to do that in the past with companies and organizations such as Optini, who've been able to offer it to municipal governments at no cost. And lastly, we do want to address the water energy nexus. Water is an ongoing, you know, resource that is being stretched very thin here in California, and I believe we can target both the water and energy issues at the same time. How can the plan help address that? What are the greatest barriers for that? We've found successes in promoting the existing water agency conservation programs, if it's out there. We've also been able to pilot leak loss detection programs, training for water agencies, which has been beneficial for agencies such as Placer County Water Association. Water audits and rebate programs are always something we could continue to promote. So that concludes the five sections. We'll now open this up to any feedback from, from the commission and the public at this point. And actually, before... Yes.
I believe that is the agency that administers the low-weatherization, low-income weatherization program for Amador County.
And low-income weatherization, can you explain that to me?
Sure. So weatherization, if you are trying to weatherize your home with weather stripping or caulking...
And that's the low-income...
It's income qualified.
Thank you. So what does the low-income mean? Is subsidized somewhere?
I believe it is a federally subsidized program. My last knowledge, it still is being subsidized, but it might have been up ahead.
I think people would have to qualify for that based on income, household income ratio.
Yes, yes.
It's a combination both PG&E's free weatherization for low-income qualified as well as the state's. So they're two different avenues that act and administers, and they're always trying to make sure they've recruited all the right participants and saturated the city with offerings for those who qualify.
I don't really have a question, but I would like to comment, I'm a real estate broker or local Realtor, and we're very much tuned in to energy consumption in households, especially coming from a sales and marketing standpoint. I think it's important for everybody to know that if Sonora does pretty well on our average consumption, that's, that's good because you're fighting an aging, very aging housing stock here. Of course, the newest generation of homes, most of this town is developed, all vacant lots and whatnot, and most of it's pretty well spoken for, are developed with a home many times over 40, 50 years old, many times even 100 years old. Our newest housing stocks, the most, most energy efficient ones, that meet all Title 24 standards since 77 or 78, they do real well. The other thing is, too, is that we have pretty extreme weather here. You'll see all the way throughout the Sierra, the West Slope, and you have, you have extremes in all seasons. So I think knowing that we kind of hug the average, that's a pretty good thing. I think that speaks well for the efficiency of what the community is doing.
You're saying against the Sonora's energy...
Energy consumption.
Okay, great. Energy households.
Yeah, that's just a general statement. Because given the, the age of the housing stocks that we have, we're constantly dealing with renovation, and many times we have to be sensitive towards historical aspects of that renovation, so it can be a two-edged sword here.
Definitely.
A point here, you know, this is a great idea, and we've heard about it through the last probably five or six years, but first thing is, your method of attack going to go to like all the residents in Sonora all take up on this, and then how do you implement this? How do you advertise in the paper, say, hey, turn your light off if you're not in a room? Or how is this going to be put into a program to rock people into saying, yeah, I should turn my lights off, shouldn't leave them on when I'm not in a room, and turn the water off when, you know, I'm done washing my hands or brushing my teeth? What is your method of attack?
It has looked different for every community, both depending on the volunteers in the community that we work with and also the staff. We definitely have our markers that we try at it for every community. So to address this sort of behavioral change that I think you're getting at is website. If your website, if the city website is used frequently for information, we make sure and try our hardest to get a page specifically just for energy action. These are things that you could do quickly if you are a utility customer or such and such, because we have worked with some outside of PG&E, primarily PG&E territory communities, but some that have other utility companies as well, we'll direct them there, just to the appropriate resources. Like I said, we do attend or try to attend at least two events throughout the year that happen in Sonora that a lot of community members attend, and we'll hand out that same, you know, flyer, we'll have conversations with people one-on-one. In other communities such as Amador, they have created and formed their own, well, we kick-started and sort of jump-started this working group, and they've definitely taken off and have started, because they have very invested individuals, you know, scheduled meetings with Chamber, with the Chamber and Cabo's Clubs, just doing presentations and getting out there. So it's a mixed bag of opportunities. Again, there's something as involved or as big as the energy fair. We build up a lot of excitement around it. The whole community comes out. Alpine County was quite small, and again, not too many people could actually get to Markleyville due to road closures, but, but it was still very successful. So again, a behavioral change, it takes a while, but... So again, a behavioral change, it takes a while, but that's one of the ways that we do it.
So educating and getting out, getting it out to people in various means, even like on the radio perhaps, and things like that.
Yes, yes.
Where people are constantly aware of some, maybe not even, maybe aware of the internet and saying, hey, I could go there. So educating, getting it out to the people is what you're going to do?
Yes, that is a big portion of it. It's not the only thing, but it definitely is huge, and so that's something that we would like to know from all of you, what is the best way, if it's not the internet, if it's the poster boy, or any other form of communication here in the town, we would like to know.
Thank you. I would suggest big time the internet. We were, I'm witness to print media, degradation of print media, and a super high horsepower shift to the internet and web and handhelds and everything. So that's, people, as much as they may not have a PC at home or whatever, they are connected with their phones.
Yeah, okay, that's good to know. More specifically, it would help for us to know those places on the internet that they're going, but we advertise this study session through all of our network, and so pinpointing those more specific websites would be helpful.
One thing that I feel and I've noticed, people are in a habit, they get into a habit of same-old, same-old, and that would be a method of attack, to try to get public to say, hey, wait a minute, it's time to change, you need to change these things, and to make it aware and to get them out of this same-old, same-old, what they do every morning, you see all that is wasted in a day by a person just because they're not, but if you could spark the tremendous value and savings to them and the community and the country, that's, I can see one of the problems when you see people that are so used to habit, doing the same thing, not willing to change something, and so maybe their attack could be that, hey, it's time to realize that this is really necessary to get with it and save yourself a lot of money.
You mentioned savings, I think within the last year or two, a couple of millions kilowatt-hours.
Yes, yes.
Would that be like in the form of street lighting and municipal buildings that have been retrofitted with more efficient lighting devices?
So that, 2 million is just PG&E programs for businesses and residents?
So it includes residences?
Yeah.
Okay.
I noticed one of your stats of 17 million kilowatt-hours for 2015 residential. Do you have stats pre-15, like 13, 14, 12?
We did.
Is it going up or down? Probably going down.
It has gone slightly down, yes.
Slightly?
I think it was within a million kilowatt-hours, I believe, for residential.
It's dropping.
Yes, but I don't have the exact numbers.
I just...
2010 was 702 kilowatt-hours per month, 2015 was 647.
702.
That's average monthly for...
So we're averaging now in 15...
647.
Okay, so that is a pretty good drop. And I only ask that because our Title 24 is quite extreme, and if you want to go beyond it, it's already extreme. There's a cost with that, and it's a great heart and it's a great endeavor, but there's a great cost with that. We're putting that on the public, we're asking the public to say, hey, we want you to spend more money on something that you're already getting good, you know, running better, so...
That is a total valid concern. I understand it costs a lot of money to go beyond Title 24 standards, and again, you know, we wouldn't put that out there if it didn't have some benefit to the community, but as you are probably aware of as well, that the Title 24 standards will go towards zero net energy for the next, for 2020.
And what will pay for zero net energy?
You know, I don't know.
That needs to be answered.
Yeah, they are at the state level, I was just at a conference in San Francisco on Monday, it was a Zero Net Energy Action Plan Workshop, and that is what, the hurdle that they are discussing in the room is how are we going to do it?
The federal government doesn't have any money, nor does the state, so we don't want to put it there as a subsidy.
Right.
It's not a caution.
It's your retail customer.
We're hoping not, I mean, I think that's why taking, taking a handle on the resources that we have available here is, it's going to take some ingenuity, but Paul might have a more specific answer.
For the energy codes in particular, the state does have a requirement that any new standards, not the Title 24 in its entirety, but just the energy codes, have to be cost-effective over the life of the building, which is for residents, 30-year mortgage is how they calculate that. And so the 2016 standards, while they did add an additional like $2,000 to $3,000 in cost for energy efficiency related, they were projected to save over 7,000 over the life of the loan, of the life of the mortgage. So that's the same with the zero net energy. Any kind of requirement for zero net energy would have to pass that cost effectiveness before it would ever get approved at the state level.
But my, part of my point is, is just to let you know that the retail customer, it ends up being subsidized by them because the cost of construction, the cost of implementation, all these things forces the cost of all this building or whatever the facility is that's being used to go up, so that that nets out to the person that's going to occupy it. It just works that way. It has to. Someone's not going to absorb that.
Yeah, there is an upfront cost that is increased, but it's lowered operational costs over the life, and so it is offset through that, but it does increase the cost upfront.
I know solar, for example, is usually residential, it's tens of thousands of dollars, and I've yet to really see that pencil out without subsidy. Without subsidies is the key, because they don't have any money either, so that's my concern federally anyway. So, you know, this is a great endeavor because of concern, but if we're already dropping through good practices, we can continue on that trail. We, residentially, our loads used to be a lot more, and it's really conditioning. Residentially, it's the conditioned load, and so a lot of that is learning to put a sweater on when it's cold, and learning to just be a little hot when it's hot. That's the truth of it. But I know that decades back, people left stuff on, and we don't do that now. It's not common that you go into a building and stuff is just left on, and we're so tight now with our buildings that we have mold problems and structural problems because we got so good at it.
That's true.
So we, we're combating, you know, so I'm not saying that to bash our endeavors here, I'm just bringing it up as a point to say that this is an endeavor to consider, but these are the nerves that are public use. Cheers.
Definitely understand. So then my question for you would be, is there any other opportunities for renewable energy that we aren't looking at? Solar is the big fancy flashy one right now throughout the nation, but is there another opportunity for a different renewable energy source? The reason why I think this is important too is because in that zero net energy workshop, they're looking at completely changing the grid, and, well, not completely, I don't want to scare anyone, but, you know, if more homes are required to connect to the grid in a certain way and perhaps contribute to it, whether it's storage or otherwise, how could Sonora do that? And I think technology is making solar a little more affordable every year, but I do understand that it does come at a huge upfront cost. So are there any opportunities for renewable energy here in the city?
I have no idea. I grow. Ron can answer this. What about insulation? I mean, you have your house, maybe it's an older house, and you can start in the back bedroom and put in a double pane window maybe each three or four months. What, how does the cost run out compared to like renewable energy like solar on a roof? Isn't it far less to put in double pane window and then...
Well, sure, initially, double pane windows are going to be less. I just did solar on my house, it cost $21,000, and I was able to pay for it, but, and it's going to pay for itself with a 30% tax write-off the first year, I mean, it's going to pay for itself in four or five years. Solar is not the way to go. I mean, they're making us put sprinklers in new homes, which I think they should make you put solar on new homes, I mean, throughout the state. It's just absolutely, you've got to spend 17, 18,000 on sprinklers, what's another 20,000 going out to get one? I mean, it should be, to me, solar is the answer. And of course, insulation in windows.
Methods of saving heat by not, you know, that seems to be, so many people don't realize that there are ways they can insulate, save energy in their house without really spending a lot of money, but it does work. So that's another avenue for you people to approach in your internet line, say, to people that don't have a lot of money but want to save, start thinking of that, you know, just stripping your door, your front door. I mean, so many people, they don't have their door stripping, they don't have so much, people when you think about how much the average person wastes in a day by just not using their head or not preparing. I mean, lights left on and water left on, just like I said, you brush your teeth. How many people, how many kids go in and brush their teeth before they go to school and turn the water off? They just let it run. Same washing their hands, I mean, you think of the millions and millions of kilowatt-hours that go out the window, educating people, like I said, to wake them up, say, hey, it's time, you can't do that anymore, that's a sin. So to say, you leave water on, look what you're wasting, but simple things to get people, I mean, I just think of all the energy that is wasted in this town in a day by stupidity.
But that goes in any community.
Right.
Across the whole USA and the world.
Yes.
One thing we do have here, and this is probably going to sound a little primitive to some people, but we do have a renewable source of energy here, it's called the forest. We have a lot of wood products in this county. Matter of fact, historically, we were very, you know, big productive county as far as that. But we're blessed in the sense here by being able to use wood heat here because we don't have emissions control standards based on our air quality here, but other urban areas like say Bay Area or some of the Valley communities where they have inversion problems, we're still fortunate enough to purchase and use a wood stove. So that's, it's kind of like an archaic device, but it does work and it's a renewable source, so I mean...
Well, I would, I would also, to answer you on renewable, I would always include hydro. We're blessed with that as well here. The water comes down in rain, we use it, we generate, and then it evaporates and goes right back up, and then we've got a nice cycle in that. So like Ron points out, he's an example where solar's working, and that's great. I don't know if he's got batteries and all the other bells and whistles in that system.
He doesn't really do batteries.
Yeah.
It would take a garage slumber in your house.
Right. So I know that wind is sporadic, it contributes to the grid in sporadic ways, in such ways where powerhouses that are hydro generators have to make up the difference. And so they're constantly messing with the voltage to make up that which is not coming in consistently through the air, and I'm sure you've seen the windmill fields, they're not real pretty, and same with the solar fields. The commercial solar fields are amazing, they cover a lot of grass and a lot of land, you know, but rooftops, maybe that's, you know, one way. So I mean, for me to answer and interject, I think the best renewable we have is hydro. It's just using it wisely.
A gentleman from the audience raised his hand. Charles?
If possible, I'd like to offer a few comments in support of the action plan. I've been working in this field, although not with an office in Sonora, for PG&E, setting up these programs for about 33 years. You know, I'm also a member of the Sierra Business Council's Board of Directors, and very interested in what this plan can mean, and some of the locally pertinent concepts that we need to keep in mind. Yes, the electrical consumption's been called out, you know, directly, but Sonora does not have access to natural gas. Therefore, for heating fuels, you've got to look at wood, you've got to look at, you know, propane, you even have old homes like mine with number two diesel being burned. So there's, you know, in looking at the entire picture, we need to consider that not having inexpensive, you know, heating fuels unless you count the, you know, the labor of, or unless you get your labor for free for cutting wood, but without inexpensive natural gas that you see in Calabasas County, relatively speaking, that imposes a stronger energy burden on the citizens of Sonora than other, you know, places in the United States. That's an important point. You know, with regard to ways to mitigate that, you know, whether you're looking at solar, or you're looking at the energy standards, or you're looking at your refrigerator, it's a pay me now or pay me later, you know, proposition. And I like to say that when we talk about energy efficiency programs, we're talking about permanent infrastructure, not habits, not education. That's conservation, which is an important element of an energy action plan, but with efficiency in mind, here's an example. My son was very proud that on his farm in Modoc County, he was able to acquire a refrigerator to store some of the extra pork he was producing, and it only cost $20. He bought it from the school district. He said, well, oh, that's a great idea. Well, I looked up this 1982 refrigerator, and he plugged it into a circuit at my actual house in Modoc County, it's going to cost $20 a month to refrigerate and freeze what he's putting in there. I looked up a brand-new refrigerator that's subject to the appliance standards in California, $5 a month, so pay me now, pay me later. You know, you can start to do the math, just as with solar savings, you know, how long would it, you know, how much is it costing extra to not have a more modern device? So in order to look at energy efficiency in Sonora for water heating, there are such things as heat pump water heaters that use a third as much energy, there are such things for space heating as ductless mini-split heat pumps that use as much as 70% less, depending upon how it's implemented. So I really think we have an opportunity with efficiency measures as well as practices with conservation to take advantage of programs that our community is already paying for. I know, you know, when the public goods charge, as mentioned briefly, if you apply that to, and I just back of envelope or back of PowerPoint deck, Sonora is paying over $10 million a year for its electricity. It's not natural gas, that would be on top of it, but this is not a natural gas-connected community. If the public goods charge 5%, did you say?
Between 2 and 3%.
Okay, so if it's between 2 and 3%, that is $300,000 a year. The citizens and businesses of Sonora are sending to San Francisco to be administered back to, you know, a jurisdiction, you know, like Sonora. The fact of the matter is, folks, here in the rural California communities, we are not getting what we've already paid in back in the same ratio. You know, the coastal areas have Departments of the Environment that are putting together these action plans, they're actually taking, you know, a huge share of it that personally, as a citizen of Sonora, I've put in writing, and Mayor Williams knows that I personally support this program and will do whatever I can, you know, to bring, you know, resources to make it successful. But we're already investing in the programs that have been set up, you know, through PG&E, Sierra Business Council, the Energy Watch. My suggestion is, let's put it on, put these programs on steroids for Sonora, so that we can get a return on an investment that's already being made, and not one that doesn't make sense. One like with the refrigerator example, it will pay for itself, yes? A newer refrigerator for my son might have cost a little bit more, but you, at $15 a month deficit spending on an efficient one, you'd get that back. So, you know, the opportunity is in a town that's already built out, you know, Commissioner Garden has already, you know, mentioned that it's more difficult, that's obviously true, and retrofits are more expensive than new construction, but there are lots of things that go beyond rebuilding your house. You know, the HVAC systems, the water heating systems, and the appliances, and all of those, the technologies have come a great distance, and there are incentives and program and education that can help our community, you know, put more money into, you know, eating than spending it on heating. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
One other thing I just thought about, I heard you mentioned wood and that type of heat, there's efficient stoves out now. Are you, is there anyone taking advantage of looking at the tremendous, so to say, there's thousands and thousands of cords of wood laying on the roadside? Just go to Greeley Hill, drive down the back road to Calderville, and you're going to see wood as far as you can see stacked on the road, just sitting there. and you're going to see wood as far as you can see stacked on the road, just sitting there. I mean, it used to be people would think, well, I don't want to pay two hundred dollars for a cord of oak or a hundred and eighty for cedar. I mean, there is so much wood in this state now from the dead trees. I would think that someone could take this and maybe try to promote this into encouraging, you need efficient stoves. You can't have the old burners that pollute the atmosphere, but there are efficient stoves. But there's so much energy out there, you can't believe it. Just drive up to Pine Crest and look at the road, where the roads, the trees have been cleared out and all the wood stacked there. More wood than you could ever imagine.
Yeah, that's a great comment and I want to point out or let you know that Sierra Business Council does do a lot of advocacy for biomass utilization. We are a member of the Rural Collaborative Word Representation, Rural County, whatever, the RCRC. I don't know the exact acronym, but we work with them to promote biomass utilization, especially after all of the dead tree mass from the past five years. I am a member of Sierra Camp, which is another Sierra Business Council program that works to hold workshops and explain the needs of our communities to get rid of this because it's definitely a forest fire hazard as well. And we've also worked to find ways for that source to become an energy source for surrounding communities. So there are solutions that we're looking for. And on another note regarding the wood burning stoves, I know that California is moving towards incentivizing moving away from those or at least incentivizing the more efficient models. So they're going to be coming out with a forest carbon strategy that is inducing residents to invest in more efficient models and that sort of thing.
Yeah, I personally see the wood stove as non-archaic at all. It's modern and great and it's an excellent form of heat that we should utilize. And I would hate to see that be pushed out as a dangerous source of heat. I do, I do, I did catch the gentleman that made the comment about natural gas. I find it amazing. We don't have natural gas in our county and I believe it surrounds us. I think it's in Sierra. I think it's in Alpine. I think it's in Mariposa. I think it's in Stanislas. And I think it's in Calaveras. I think we're literally surrounded by it. It's just, I don't know why it's not here. But I think as far as residents goes, I've got to say, I think they're already beat to death except for the fact that the split, the split systems are a good system because they're driven motor. In other words, to get, not to get too technical here, the motor is a DC drive motor. It uses a lot less energy. We can do that same thing with other compressed motors. They're doing that now with refrigeration. And so the technology is there and that's why refrigeration is such less to run now. It uses less energy, yet costs more money. So that meets your goal of bringing the dollar back to the people here in this community because we're paying less bills and not incurring a rule or a law or, you know, something of that nature. But a net zero building that's non-residential, the ones that I've seen, are extremely technical. In other words, they changed structure so much to take advantage of light and shades and all of that primarily for lighting, yet conditioning seems to be the issue. So I find it amazing that we get so technologically crazy for lighting, which in this day and age is now LED. We've already grabbed the low hanging fruit off of that. So it's not the lighting, even in non-residential. If we're already on LED, we're already at the best we can get. It's conditioning and motor load. And so we need, that's where we could find a way to spend, you know, more brainstorming to beat that and that's industrial and commercial. And so again, in construction, what I see on net zero is extreme costs, extreme technical, extreme measures on some of the stuff that's already down there. So that's more of a comment than anything. I would just wonder, so when you come back to the council, are you, this would be a program that we would be considering to recommend to the city council as a rule or as a measure to say, here, let's motivate the public to do this?
The latter. We bring this back as a plan. It's a document and again, it's voluntary. Even after the city accepts it or approves it, no one is essentially forcing the city to do anything with it. But our hope is that, again, we bring the dollar back into the community that they've already paid into to help get them to that point of realizing any type of savings.
Charles, you had your hand up again.
I just wanted to, you know, reinforce the wood heating, you know, element of the action plan. I live on a hill overlooking downtown Sonora. And if we have an inversion, the pollution from wood heat here makes it all a blue haze that is not something that is, you know, good for the health and welfare of the community. That having been said, modern EPA-certified wood heating devices eliminate, you know, that pollution. And in the process, the efficiency of the wood stove can go from thirty percent to sixty percent. So guess what? You cut, haul, stack or pay for half as much wood to produce the same amount of beneficial heat. So I think if we look to the Air Resources Board or some other sources of funding to reduce the pollution from wood heat in Sonora by helping people, you know, with rebates that would help retrofit their inefficient polluting wood heating systems to efficient new ones, they would not only help with the air quality, but it would take half as much wood. So I think that the wood heating element of the action plan is one that I think should be emphasized, particularly as Commissioner Richardson mentioned. You know, we're coming, you know, there's wood coming out of our ears here that, you know, certainly could be put to beneficial use, but carefully and efficiently and with health and safety in mind.
The gentleman in the back corner has his hand.
Yeah, my name's Tom. Tom Durston. Just on a smattering of topics, one was about sealing the building envelope until it's kind of airtight. And what ATCA does on that right now is they also put in active heat transfer ventilation so that they're pumping fresh air in and stale air out with the heat transfer device. They're not losing energy as it goes out like you would in a drafty door. Let's see. Something that you haven't talked about that's maybe a couple of years off is solar plus storage. And as you mentioned, to run your whole house for a few days, it takes a lot of batteries. But right now, the solar energy is getting really plentiful in the afternoons. And so the power plants, in some cases are Calaveras County little hydro plants, are having to pay to dump electricity into the grid at that time. But anyway, and the residential and commercial rates are shifting to time of use where afternoon rates are going to be the off peak and the evening ones, when the sun's down, will be the peak rates. So, you know, within a couple of years, the batteries are going to be important. And because of the electric car industry, the batteries are getting cheaper every year. So that's something to just, you know, I mean, this is like a two-year study. So it's something to keep in mind. So one thing that we didn't mention is the city and county buildings. And I think the city and county buildings have an advantage that private buildings don't, which is, I'm not positive how the financing works out. But where a building that belongs to a restaurant, it's a little hard to get somebody to finance that because you don't know if the restaurant's going to be there for twenty years and pay back the loan or the PPA or at least. But the city buildings, I think you could probably find lenders or investors, not lenders, investors, because the city probably would not buy a system. But you could probably get investors on the right kind of building with good sun who would invest in a power purchase agreement. And over the course of ten years or so, they'd get all, the investor would get their money back. And the city would have like a twenty-year contract where every year they would pay less for their electricity than they do now. So that's something to look into. I know in many cases, a PPA works like that where there's no down payment. Some investor is putting the money upfront, getting the return on investment, but the government entity just has a lower power bill. Now, a nice thing about doing that on the city and county buildings is an intangible of leadership. And when people see some leaders doing some good, positive things that are attractive and make sense, it's kind of like a public education that it's kind of pulling the people rather than pushing them. And I don't know, some places you have public leaders who just really, you know, draw people into, you know, following a positive direction. I think we have potential in our city leadership here to do that. Another thing about the solar, in the real estate market, we can do some education with the Realtors. There are good publications from Lawrence Livermore Lab that show that in California, on average, if you put solar on the roof of your house, the resale value of your house increases by more than the cost of installing the solar. And there's some difficulty in doing appraisals that reflect that, but on the average, it works. And our Realtors could be the target of some of our education and they could be a persuasive force for homeowners.
It's a good point. Sir, I want to, I don't want to catch you off here, but I'm sure we did an opportunity for you to speak again, but there's another lady here that would like to speak. Let's try and keep our comments to about five minutes.
So my name's Ruann and I work with Sierra Business Council. I'm part of the SNU program. My buddy here, John, is also part of the SNU program, our acronym for Sierra Nevada Energy Watch. And I've been working with Sierra Business Council for almost a year and a half and have done some public events here in our county and have informally surveyed lots of people, lots of residents who come by our booth or our table. And what, my first takeaway from the first event was how surprised I was and how many of our residents have already converted to LED. In fact, I felt a little embarrassed because I hadn't completed switching my house over completely to LED because they're expensive. You know, those LED lights are a lot more expensive than the less energy efficient ones. But it seemed as though, seriously, everybody who came by had already converted. And that was true of the next two events that I attended at our, in our county. So my sense was that our residents, they are coming along and they're doing it. And I asked, it was almost, some people were concerned about energy use, but most were concerned about their energy bills. And, but what this new program does, we target commercial and industrial sites and also municipalities or special districts. And that's different. When we did the campaign up and down Washington Street and then I've done a number of audits all over the county, the technology that's being used in most of our commercial spaces is very old. In fact, we're one of the counties that still uses a lot of T-twelves, which is a technology that was introduced right at the end of World War II. The energy, the amount of energy that it's sucking up is stunning. So what we do, and when you talked about, gosh, the expense of swapping all that out, it eventually gets, you know, passed on to the end user. Well, in this case, that public charge that we're all paying into, it's that pot of money that Charles was saying, we've already paid for this. When I go in and audit and we come up with a plan to swap out all your lighting, we calculate what the incentive is going to be to help that business owner convert because the PUC and PG&E understand that it's a lot to ask, especially small owner operated, small businesses, especially in the rural, hard-to-reach areas like foothills. And so this incentive makes a big difference. And it depends on the type of building and the type of lights, but I can tell you, and I won't mention their names because PG&E is very particular about disclosure of people's private information. But we have some businesses here recently, a couple right here on Washington. One in particular was, I think it was just under a thousand dollars worth of lamps and it was no cost to him because of the incentives, the way the incentives worked out. There's another very popular business in town over in the junction where I think we proposed, it was a little over seven hundred dollars worth of lamps and I think the business owner was on the hook for a little less than thirteen dollars. So, and those are subsidies that were already paid for. I mean, we already paid for it. I'd rather that person in the junction get it than, you know, the restaurant owner in San Francisco. That's just me. And PG&E has gone out of their way to make sure that rural, hard-to-reach areas like ours not only get coverage, which is what we're supposed to do, but also in some circumstances, we're able to demonstrate that they need twice the amount of incentive than regular people because of a variety of different reasons, mostly because it's hard to make a living up here. And so they make that available. They will double the incentive for folks who genuinely cannot afford it. So that's actually a tax in your government working in our behalf. And by the way, those streetlights, they are costing a lot of money. We can save you a lot of money swapping those. Anyway, it's very exciting.
Thanks, Mr. Brown.
Is that available to just businesses? Would the city be able to qualify for?
Yes, the city qualifies for that.
We should clarify, the city does not qualify for PG&E rebates and incentives because their power is provided by Twomey Public Power Agency, which is a federal. It was a.
The New Malonis thing.
Yes, it was the outcome of the New Malonis dam.
But some of those. Some of those streetlights are.
So all the streetlights are on PG&E. So those can go through retrofit and get incentives to reduce the energy use. There is a handful of small facilities that the city owns that are served by PG&E and we are looking at that energy use as well as energy use of facilities served by TPPA, Twomey Public Power Agency. So that will all be quantified in the plan. The financing is a little, or the cost of energy is a little bit different than PG&E because it is hydro from the New Malonis. So the variables are a little bit different for the payback on efficiency programs, but the TPPA does have their own incentives for programs and there is private companies in Sonora that do work with TPPA to do audits and retrofits of both the city and special districts who also qualify for that power.
Your comments, sir, about solar and residential applications and the association with appreciation and homes value, very well taken. I'm a member of the Local Association of Realtors. We've listened to presentations from different solar contractors. Solar's still kind of a new beast that's arrived and the thing that's kind of daunting about a lot of solar is the initial cost. Ron said, you know, most people here don't have, even though for, if you use a parallel, like a fifteen or thirty-year mortgage, people don't have a horsepower here to go on ahead and put out twenty, thirty thousand dollars per solar system that may, you know, net out zero energy cost from the PGE bill. But what we really have to also recognize is who are the stakeholders in our community? This is a resort area. A lot of people, it's a transient crowd many times that go in and out of second homes. So that's a, for selling solar or to implement solar to the extent that I would like to see it, sometimes is probably just an economic hardship on people that are coming here for a second home temporarily. Because the real solar, in my take, the solar beneficiary is a person that's a permanent resident that sees the return on that investment in at least a five or ten-year period because they're going to be in that house. But it's, believe me, the real estate people are very much in tune with that. I don't know, I haven't seen any hard information on relative cost versus the automatic inflation or inflated price of a home yet. I think it'll take a little time for that to happen, but certainly an enhancement that we're aware of. Based on the cost of solar, the upfront cost of solar, despite the tax credits that people enjoy from that, there are programs for people to finance solar. And these can be kind of haunting because they come back, they have to be paid for should that person, that notice due at the time of sale. Sometimes some of these mortgages, there are no equities, they're underwater. So that's, there's been some.
I don't know anybody that's been happy renting solar.
Yeah, some of that's been a real problem.
It's not a good thing.
It's not a good thing.
But anyway, it's the future, the future's here now. And so solar and residential applications is for sure, it's a keeper. I think we're totally going to get better over time.
But we don't necessarily have the view for the solar to be, unless the technology gets to where they can get more watts out of a panel, we have less view in most of our places. We're not in such a, because we have trees. We got hills and we got trees. And so we don't, we're not the same as down in the valley where you may have a sun shot for how many hours in a day.
We don't have south exposure all day long.
I think solar is one of the technologies, anything, you know, for energy, right? I mean, they had talked years, not too far back, about trying to find a way to use the desert sand. And I wonder out loud, why can't we use a parking lot that's black and somehow parking lots and roads generate? But solar is still, it's like Ron's system, he doesn't have the batteries. And this gentleman brought up that batteries are going to become more and more of a thing. But the concern I have with batteries is we still don't know what to do with them when they go bad. It's a hazardous thing. There's going to, you know, can you imagine all the batteries showing up like we do with spare tires? I mean, we just now figured out what to do with spare tires. So maybe, I mean, that might be an extreme, but the technology has to come a ways before we really could say, oh, wow, we're comfortable with this thing coming in.
I think education is a big thing. One thing that Charles said about that refrigerator just blew me away because I got an old refrigerator out of my garage. It's an international harvester. Also, here I'm paying $20 for that refrigerator. That thing's gone this week.
Want to buy a friendly, Ron?
Can't happen.
Okay. Folks, I gotta tell you, as a Realtor, I could start a used appliance business that you'd be a part of. And most of them are dinosaurs. They're energy dinosaurs. But a lot of my sellers go, and by the way, I'm going to leave the appliances. And they're, all of a sudden, the wheels are turning for them like they've hit a four-star cherry thing, and they're going to get a big payout for them. You get really a nickel on the dollar for a used appliance, and the buyers really want all that stuff parked somewhere else and not in the house that they're buying. So the $20 refrigerator story, I love that too because it really, it really hits home. I got a gazillion $20 refrigerators out there, no place to put them.
The LED light's the big thing, too. I mean, just education, people, it's so simple that, I mean, this seems to me like a great program we need to implement, you know?
The appliances, like technology, have come exponentially, and that's why the refrigerator's a good point there. Over the last 10 years, exponentially, it has increased for the better. And so the encouragements and the incentives and the education we can give the public, showing them their bill, how much it drops, you know? Here's a place you can bring your old junk for a cut rate today and buy this new one. Those types of incentives, that's a good way to go because that's helping people maybe cam over and make that decision for something that's really going to save them substantially. And then ironically, it's a lot less energy. So, you know, if we can talk about, you know, putting the money back in the community is the goal, we can emphasize that for the public and help them make that decision. And yeah, spend $600 on a refrigerator, get rid of the international harvester, and save money substantially and have longevity. If, I would just wonder, it's gone so much exponentially, how much more can it really go? A motor is still a motor. I think at some point, it's still a motor, and it still has horsepower, and it's still doing some work. And again, the LED light, that's already, that's this technology. I mean, 15 years ago, we were incandescent. And we have fluorescents in the commercial buildings, old, you know, 15, 20 years ago. We were primarily incandescent, which is a filament heater, you know? And so we've come a long ways for the better. But, you know, we can give incentives for, to encourage people to buy the new product. They go down to the local appliance store, that guy gets to sell a few things, they get the benefit of savings, including heat pumps. And maybe get rid of heat pumps.
Would you, you're recommending that the planning commission is going to make, so to say, a study and a recommendation to the council. Isn't that kind of in the wind? Is that where we're going here with this?
No, Tom, we're not exactly sure of the plan, how, it depends on what's in the plan and whether it'll come to the planning commission first and then to the council, or whether it'll go directly to the council. Depends what recommendations are in there. So we'll see when we get to that point on whether it stops here first or it goes directly to the council.
So I was thinking we could...
It might not come here if it really isn't a land use. It just, we just don't know what shape it's going to take. When, if it's more incentive policy-type stuff, it'll probably just go directly to the council. I don't know if you guys will see it again, but if there is some land use recommendations, policy changes regarding land use, then it would come back from here.
I would like to add on the heat pump. I've only ever used a swamp cooler in this community. And I know there are some places that would be trying, but that's a technology that is simple, primitive, cheap, efficient. And it works great at this elevation. And so we're quick to put in something because we want to condition the whole thing square to square. But if we can educate the public that you can get very comfortable with something that costs you an eighth of the price that it would take you to run heat pumps and condition the whole place, those are the type of ideas that I would help and hope that would take off. Because even that technology's actually gotten, you know, much better. They have water cooling units that are very efficient now, especially at this elevation.
The information that's come out of this meeting right now, the refrigerator, what Mr. Eaton just said, and all this information about what I mentioned about turning the water off when you're brushing your teeth, if there was a way to put this into an educated portfolio or go online for the people of Sonora to have a look at all the ways they could really save, in other words, educate them and get them picking all these things that we started to go through now. A lot of people don't even think of a refrigerator, how much money they're wasting, or how much water they waste, or what a solar would do, or by putting double-pane windows. I don't even think they go there. It's get up every day and do the same thing, but we might be able to come up, or the council could come up with either a plan, a list of 20 things you could do to save yourself money and energy and cover these areas.
Right, yeah. So again, I believe all this feedback, which I've taken and I believe my colleagues have been writing down, we plan to incorporate it in some way into the narrative of the plan. The planning document isn't your average light reading material, so it's also been our task throughout the year to condense it into digestible forms depending on the audience. And, you know, like I said, the website has been a way that we've done that.
Sure.
To have it all on one page, even just a one-page printout where you have easy-to-access resources, but then also, again, like I said, changing the message depending on the audience we're talking to. If we're talking to a room full of Realtors or contractors specifically who want to know more about solar, how on earth zero net energy is going to be achieved, that is what we would do. And work with, again, work with the city staff on what would be most beneficial from the plan after having made it with things that only would benefit the community.
Were you guys part of the Home and Garden Show?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Couple other areas to look at that are harder to tackle, the space heating and cooling. There are great techniques you can use on new construction, pretty tough on retrofit. The other really big one that's hard to handle is transportation, cars and trucks, buses.
Well, that's my bugaboo for just about everything that comes before us because traffic and any aspect of traffic and people's means to get from one place to another in an area like this is created a, well, has been a consistent dynamic in improving any project that we do.
Transportation. Yeah, and that's outside the scope of the work that we're doing here.
Right, I understand.
And the energy action plans that are really, are more of a planning document to quantify the potential for savings and provide recommendations on actions, really what, I mean, the list of strategies that you're recommending, really more on implementation side of the plan and the work that we do during that first year where we're offering our assistance through our PG&E funded program so that we can help get those resources out to the community so they understand.
Education.
Yeah, education is a key component of how we see implementation of that action plan.
Any other questions, comments?
So the funding for your services, is it, where's it coming from?
It comes from PPA. It's the same money that funds the efficiency incentives and the rebates that communities and residents and businesses can take advantage of. It's another piece of the portfolio of funding that they provide.
When I walked in, I wasn't going to say anything, but I want all of you commissioners to know that the Sierra Business Council only does this for two locations in their territory. And when they came and presented this and talked to us about it, one of the locations they wanted to do was the city of Sonora. So two locations a year, and we're one of them. The council approved to move forward and have them create this plan, and it's 100% paid for by a charge that is on every one of our PG&E bills that we're making today. So it's going to benefit not only the residents, but commercial locations. And anything that isn't covered under the TPPA can qualify under this program for additional recommendations for cost savings.
Did you get a bunch of information from us?
So much, I have a lot here. We are, like I said, taking notes, vigorous CS on, Nikki scribbling some stuff. So we'll bring this back to our office. And again, if you have any additional comments, feel free to let us know. So next steps, like I said, we'll incorporate this feedback and prepare a public review draft. We're very closely with Rochelle and have the city staff review it. Also, as I mentioned before, if there's any people here in the room who are interested in helping us vet more specifically those strategies and what education and outreach looks like in Sonora, that would be helpful, I guess, we have it tailored to the community and review, possibly review an early public review draft. Again, you can let us know. Our Paul, Aaron's, and my contact. Information is very hard to read right there. We have business cards, so we'll leave those here. And thank you, planning commissioners, for your time. Glad to be on you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nice job.
Thanks. And to let you guys know, we have posted to the front, or a link to the front of the website of the city to encourage people to find this so that they can get to the survey.
Perfect, yes. And we will leave the survey, why don't you leave the survey open?
We'll leave it open for at least a couple more weeks, probably till the end of June. And so continue to be publicized and we'll seek, like, more responses.
Rochelle?
So can you fill the registration form? We'll wrap this up very quickly. I wanted to let you know that John and Chris have both been reappointments to the planning commission for another four-year term. And I would personally like to thank them for applying. We all work very well together, and I appreciate the time that you guys put in and the effort and the work that we all do as a team. We're very, very good team staff and the planning commission. And I would like personally thank you for reapplying and being willing to commit the time that you guys do, being prepared for these meetings for the public. So I wanted to thank you, the staff level, Paul, and the work that you guys do on the planning commission. So anyway, and also want to let you know, we will definitely have a meeting next month. We'll have a meeting, we have a parcel map that's coming through, you don't see those very often. And we also are planning on bringing the general plan changes back for final, this time as an action item, for a recommendation onto the city council. So we did want to let you guys know, and please plan on being with that meeting. And that's all that I have.
I would like to say that you and Paul do an outstanding job making our job so much easier by the way you put the information to us. I think everybody agrees.
Like I said, we're a good team and we do the pressure, the efforts, and the hard work that you guys do.
We've roped in some pretty crazy steers here this last couple of years, I believe.
Yeah, it's been interesting. Some good, sometimes it's quiet, but, so thanks again.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll adjourn the meeting.